All right, now let's take a moment as we want to get this show started. Couple of things, I know everyone's here to support their candidate of choice, or maybe just to find out about all five of them. There's no way I can tell you to not cheer if you think something was particularly well said, or to mutter if you think something's particularly not well said. But keep in mind, we're trying to get as many questions in as possible in our allotted time. So if we can try to refrain from any distracting or extended outbursts, we would certainly appreciate that. I know it's hard to contain your excitement, so just do your best. The format for this evening, each candidate is going to be allowed to make a 90-second opening statement. Now when the panelists then get to the Q and A section, they will ask a question, and they will have 90 seconds in which to answer the candidates themselves. When we eventually move toward the end of the program to where candidates can ask each other a question, the candidates will have no more than 30 seconds to phrase their question, whether to an individual candidate or to the whole panel, or all the people running as one. From that point, once their question is asked, they will have 60 seconds to whoever was asked the question to respond. Finally, as moderator, and for those who didn't catch Alan Sanders, I am the moderator, I will exercise privilege as necessary to either ask for follow-up and/or clarification, in which case in the first segment they would have no more than an additional 90 seconds or 60 during the second portion. Without further ado, let's begin. We have our first opening statement from Steve Taylor.
Thank you, Alan. I'd like to thank WBHF and the Tribune News for having us here tonight. I hope the audience and radio listeners will learn more about me and my vision for Bartow County. I love this county. My wife Sandy and I are both born and raised here. We've raised four children and seven grandchildren that live here. I run a business that's been in my family since 1948. I've been active in bringing new jobs to Bartow County. I chair the County Development Authority, and I'm a member of the Joint Development Authority. I'm a member of the Cardiffville Bartow County Chamber of Commerce, and I've served on its board. I've been involved in negotiating incentive packages with companies looking to expand or come to Bartow County. I know how to determine if our taxpayers will receive a benefit from offering incentives to a company, or if we are just giving away too much. We have to make deals that make sense. We need a leader with business experience, who has led a business through the worst recession of our lifetime. A leader who's made a payroll, made tough business decisions, and restored profitability to his own business. Everybody up here's going to tell you they've got a vision, including me. But I understand what it takes to make that vision a reality, because as a member of our authorities, I've stood up and made decisions that were unpopular with some people at that time, but proved to be the right thing for this county. I've had to make tough calls, the right calls, and if elected, I'll do it again. I get things done. You can have a vision, but you have to have a person who understands what can and cannot be done.
All right, unfortunately, that's your 90 seconds, so thank you very much. That was Steve Taylor. Now, for Tracy Lewis. Tracy?
Thank you, Alan, and thank you WBHF Radio and Daily Tribune News for sponsoring this. My name is Tracy Lewis. I'm a lifelong resident of Bartow County. I'm the daughter of Dean and Linnell Lewis. We're from White, Georgia, and I'm sister to Jeff and Kim Lewis, and I'm a proud aunt of McCall, Parker, and Peyton Lewis. I have had my own business, fast-track delivery and warehouse, since 1989, so it's been my 24th year. I know what it's like to make a payroll, and to get customers, and to deliver services on time. I have been involved in the community since coming home from college, and I've been paying attention. And I believe I have been called to serve in the capacity of Bartow County Commissioner to represent all 100,000 of us, 100,000 strong now, regardless of age, gender, race, a social status, or where you go to church. I believe that I am the right age, the right energy, and the right ideas. The right age, I'm in the prime of my career, nowhere near retirement, and I'm just getting my second wind. The right energy is I want to use that to help the citizens of Bartow County. And the right ideas, I have the fresh ideas to build on the foundation that we have here in Bartow County, and to take us to the 21st century. So I ask that you pay attention, and I would love to earn the opportunity to earn your support for County Commissioner Tracy Lewis.
Thank you very much, Tracy. Up next, Mike Abernathy.
I want to thank all the people that are here tonight, as well as the radio station, and all the folks that may be listening to us today. I am Mike Abernathy. I've been in Bartow County for 59 years, and my wife Shirley here, and my family, we have three children, we have eight grandchildren. We've lived in Cardiffville on Old Alabama Road for 30 years, and worked with power company 38 years. My father passed away last April, we moved to Kingston, so we've been in Kingston for about a year now, living in both places. But as we get into this race and we're looking ahead, you're going to have to have solid leadership. I'm a solid businessman, I have a solid history behind me, I have the education, I have the business degrees, I have the education degree, I have the things that I've learned in a corporate environment that have come back to help me throughout life, and I've gone through Georgia Tech and their OSHA program for general industry, construction standards, both. I've worked with them, I've worked in our OSHA programs, and everything that's going to affect us and the county, and is going to affect all our industries. Worked with the environmental folks, we've been a part of all that's happening here, and for 38 years I worked with a power company, and then I retired after 38 years, and have pastored churches here for another 38, 30 years, and then rental properties as well across the county, and just have enjoyed people. And it's going to be my heart's desire to care for the Bartow County people, and the welfare of all the people, not just a handful, but all people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike Abernathy. Up next, Mike.
Ditto to all those thanks. I must be the youngest one up here, I've only lived here 33 years of my life. I was raised in Castleman, one of six children. My dad was one of 19 guardians in Castleman, my mom's one of 11 in the Dareford. My family's roots are as deep and as broad as any of you out there, and I'm proud of that. I chose to come back home here 12 years ago because of my love for my county. And what I'm doing right now is a give-back thing for me, based on my experience, because of the love for my county. I have 30 years of experience in executive leadership, in finance, engineering, economic development, and civic leadership duties that span a wide spectrum of experiences that I think's a great match to what the county's present challenges are, and its future promise needs to fulfill that promise. We've all agreed here that the central issue is job creation. I challenge you to check out the credentials, check out the experience, check out folks who really have done jobs. You'll find that the experience is a great differentiator, and we do have a very serious challenge in that regard in the county, and that's why I'm putting myself out there in a way that I never have in my life before. The experience base that I have, I think, will lead us to a very promising future. We've got a lot of, lot of things to do different, we've got things to move forward with, in a way that visionary, energetic, experienced leadership with integrity can only fulfill. Mike Bearden, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And our final panel, or our final delegate for the evening, Tony Tidwell.
I'd also like to thank all you people who take the time out of your busy evening to come and listen to this space, this shows your concern and care for Bartow County. I'm basically a lifelong resident of Bartow County, over about two years. When I graduated from college, I moved away and couldn't stand it, had to get back home, miss my family, miss Bartow County. I'm a grad at Cardiffville High School, I'm married to my wife now, Lisa, have two daughters, Lindsey and Shelley Tidwell, both graduated from Woodland High School. I am the building official for Bartow County, the position I've had for 28 years, I was hired in '84 to actually start the program up, and I've been blessed to have been there all this time. So I have an understanding of what's going on in the county. I've got a degree from Jacksonville State University in Business, minor in Economics. I've been involved with the budget process for the county, I understand our personnel policies, I understand how different departments interact with each other, and I would definitely appreciate your vote July 31st. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Now we'll begin with the panelist's Q and A, and we start with Ernestine Young Jones.
Thanks, Alan. You've just introduced yourselves, but despite two previous forms, and I'm sure numerous opportunities, some people feel that you all sound like the same person. So if you will, tell us how you are different from each other.
We'll start with Tracy.
Well, the obvious is... I'm one of the good old boys, I'm the girl on the mic. And my age is the other difference. When I said the right age, I wanted to expound on that a little bit more, so great question, Ernestine, thank you. If you look back the past 100 years, the commissioners, when they have gone into office, they have been in the prime of their career, they've been in their mid-40s, that is where I am. And I have the energy to give, and I want to serve the community to the best of my ability, and use my business smarts and business decisions that I have done. But I think the first obvious one is, I'm the girl.
Mike Abernathy?
Ernestine, I got this special haircut for tonight to set me apart from everybody. No, no, no. Almost everybody. Ernestine, I believe that my one quality that sets me apart from everybody at this table is a people person. That I have been in the people business all my life, and since becoming a Christian and becoming a pastor, that has been essential. Even with Georgia Power, I was a people person. In business environments, I was the people person. I was sent to take care of people. In every job I have ever possessed, no matter who it was, it was to work with people. You've got to be able to work with people, you've got to have the implement to work with them, and I have that ability to work with people at every level. And to walk away, even though we might not like each other, we can walk away with an answer when we get through, and get the jobs done, no matter what's at hand. And that characteristic alone is going to set us apart, I believe.
Okay. Mike Bearden?
How much time do I have? I'm a Christian, I'm a conservative, and a Republican. We're all describing ourselves like that. That's in my order. Education, so we'll talk about education. I've got a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Georgia Tech, the first degree I had was from Cass High School, which we almost all are. I have an MBA in finance from Georgia State University. I've run multiple large organizations, some of whose budgets and organizations, some of them budgets were five times the size of the $100 million roughly budget of Bartow County. I will not need all the job training. I'm the only one who's provided services to every level of government, from Washington City to the city of Emerson. Organizations under my accountability have provided engineering, planning, and financial consulting to most any level of government you can imagine. I have experiences that span all of the aspects that I think are relevant to the county's challenges and the futures. I've sat across the table and negotiated with governors and mayors and county commissioners, them begging me to please bring the plant or the industry that was expanding across the country to their county. I've brought jobs across the country. My role in life now, the best thing I could think to do with my life, is to use those advantages and those differences to bring jobs to Bartow County. We've got too many people hurting, too many things that need attention because of jobs. That's why I'm doing it, that's the differentiator. Thanks.
All right. Tony Tidwell?
Okay, I'm a graduate from Cardiffville High School, have both my daughters, yes. No, no canes. I have two daughters who graduated from Woodland High School, so I kind of have a bond with both county and city. I mean, well, I do have that bond. Talk about age, well, you know, with age comes maturity and wisdom, and I hope I've gotten a little bit of that over the years. Did see my health coach today that we deal with with the county, try to keep our costs down on our health insurance, and found out that for my age, which is 59, I'm really rated around 54, so that gives you a few more years. I'm an optimist. I have a sign on my desk that says, "Now let's think of some reasons why it can be done." You know, you get tired of hearing about excuses, that we can't do it because of this. Let's think of some reasons why it can be done. So that's the kind of attitude I go with. And I'm the only candidate who is a proven, experienced public servant, and county government is, I mean, private industry has a lot of good things about it, but county government is different. Thank you.
All right, and finally with the first question, Steve Taylor.
You know, as Mike said, jobs is of the utmost importance here, and I'm the only candidate that has sat on the Development Authority that's actually helped negotiate to bring companies here. And I think that stands out among the several. I'm also, I've been in business for around 35 years, in my family business, and I've ran it for, say, the last 25 years. And I think experience counts more than anything. And you're talking about age, I'm 56 years old. My hero Ronald Reagan took office at 70 years old. Age is important, maturity is important, but I think there's a lot of energy left in most of us, and Tracy, I know you're the youngest one here, but there's just so much energy left, and I don't know who the oldest is, really. But I'm 56, and I think I'm pretty sound minds right now. So I think that as far as age goes, it's not, there's not a big difference in ages up here, and so that shouldn't be a determining factor, so to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For question number two, we turn to Mike Barcy.
Thanks. If elected, what would be your first big initiative? And I guess even more important, how would you fund that initiative?
And this right, our first question goes to Mike Abernathy.
The first initiative's going to be to look at our budgets, period. You're going to have to go through and look at the line items going through here. So the first time we step in, we're going to take that option, we're going to go in and we're going to start looking at budget, and we're going to look at a budget that's going to be sound for the year, what we're going to have to do, what we're going to need to do. And when you take that in, you're going to look at two budgets. I believe you're going to have to have a budget that is normal operations, and then a budget for a deficit time if we wind up seeing a downturn in the economy, again, which most economists are predicting we may see that again in 2013. So the first thing you're going to do is go in and develop really two budgets at the same time, one the one that we're going to use, and one in emergency situation. I've said that two or three times, you need a backup in case the economy did go down. The economists out there now say by 2013 we could see a downturn in the economy, 2014, and it could be 10 times worse than the 2008 budget crisis we had. I believe anywhere in the county, we better get ready for the worst and hope for the best, no matter what you do. But a good management, you can't just prepare for what you see, but you're going to have to prepare for long-term and short-term, and you need a five-year plan. I have a five-year plan I'd like to put in place when we step in there, and that's going to be the first thing, is to hit through those budgets and look at them. And it won't be a cost of that, it's going to be elbow grease, and spending time to make sure we've got the right things going our way.
All right, but before we move with that same question, one of the parts of the question was actually, do you have an initiative? Was there a first initiative or project that you would look for day one?
Yes, we're all going to be looking to get our tax structure down as soon as we get in there, and that tax, when we step in, we're going to, we're going to need to do away with some things, and we're going to look at them, what we can and can't do, and that's going to be the initiative right off the bat, to help the businesses that are coming in here with us.
Okay. That same question now to Mike Bearden.
Most important issue is jobs, job creation. Every organization that I've led, I've had to be the chief salesman. The most hurting need that we have is to be a salesman for Bartow County where the jobs come from. It's not appropriate, and it's not going to cut it for us to sit here and wait on jobs to come. We must go out and do that. So my first initiative is to entirely remake the nature of the county commissioner's job as the salesman for the county, and put together a strategic initiative that pulls together all the resources that are out there to go sale job, primarily in the Midwest, but parallel to that thing, and I can give you a lot of details and steps on that. Parallel to that, two other initiatives that are indeed important, just a longer period of time in terms of evolution. No, you don't do the budget first. We do a full program review of the entire scope of services of the organization, the business of government. We evaluate the staff, we evaluate the department heads, we decide what needs to continue, what needs not to continue, what needs to change, what needs to increase. Set the scope, set the process of the budget, I mean, the business of government. Parallel to that, a full total reassessment, arms length of the tax digest. At the end of that, then you start your budget process. Once you know where your revenues are, what level they are, and you know what level of services you're providing, then we do a zero-based budgeting effort. Parallel to that is an ongoing performance management system for the county employees based on my experience. And lastly, a full-based review of the county's long-range growth plan, starting with water, sewer, transportation plan, and land use plan.
Thank you very much. Now, Tony Tidwell.
First going in, I mean, we've got to look at the fact that the county is going to be facing something we haven't seen in years. We've got a commissioner that's going to be leaving with 21 years of service, we have a county administrator that's been with us for 19 years. There's a lot involved that we're going to have to go through and evaluate before we make a decision on what we would do. I am already pretty much familiar with all the departments that are under the county commissioner's office anyway. I've dealt with them over the years in one fashion or another, so I pretty much go through the strengths and weaknesses there. I would like to get with the other elected officials that we'll have after, when all's said and done, sit down, let's look and find some ways that we're maybe, we have overlooked where we can cut out some expenses. We've got other employees that are going to be retiring. Our main thing right now, I think, is just to, if you want to say status quo, but let's see what we can do to keep the expenses down, keep the taxes down, try to keep our quality employees that we have, and just provide that service, all those needs, services the county needs at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now for that same question to Steve Taylor.
I think the first thing I would do, or maybe even before I took office, would be to hire a county administrator. And I think that is of the utmost importance. Whoever she or he may be, we would look inside the county, and of course, we would look all around the region for the very best person. And then I think I would try to form a relationship with all the department heads, and get to know them, and let them get to know me, and see what kind of manager I am. As revenues pick up, one of my first priorities would be to eliminate furlough days. County employees haven't had a raise in a long time, and the furlough day, as you know, is actually a cutting pay. And I know Commissioner Brown, a few weeks ago, gave them a extra check to make up for some of those furlough days, but I think eliminating furlough days would be the objective that I would look for as far as county employees go, as far as human resources go. And as Mike said, of course, jobs is of the utmost importance. We have got to bring jobs, and quality jobs, lifestyle jobs in Bartow County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Tracy Lewis?
Yes, thanks. Great question. My first big initiative would be to make free court tax, the inventory tax on industries, 100% exempt. And I have a mount to show you, Bartow County, we are not 100% exempt, we are 80% exempt. That is crippling us from attracting industries. That is the one reason that we lost Lowe's, that Lowe's is just past the county line and Floyd. So that would be my first big initiative, to answer your question, and how to fund it. The Bartow County Maintenance and Operations Budget, it affects it, this past year around $250,000. I think in the first week, I can sit down with Finance Director Joe Taylor, and we can figure out $250,000 to cut out of the $62 million budget, easily. And as far as the Bartow school systems, there is a little, is the same effect, it's around half a million out of 120 million plus budget. So if they can't find ways to do that, I have an idea for public-private partnerships. And those industries that are already paying for that free court tax, they will definitely get one-third off, being the county, I mean, no budget, but the other would be finding public-private partnerships for those industries if the school system still needed it. And of course, another big initiative is to meet with each department head, it's a part of my Tracy's first 90-day solutions, and find ways to trim waste.
Thank you very much. Question three, from the Daily Tribune News, Jessica Looney.
Hello to all of you. The budget has been brought up several times already. As you know, the budget is a public document. Have any of you taken a look at the budget, and if so, what specific cuts do you have in mind?
And in this one, I believe we go to Mike Bearden first.
Cut's a lovely word. The first cut is I will be your county administrator. My experiences and the things that I've done in my profession lead me to understand that there's a lot of issues that must be addressed immediately by the leader of your county. There's no doubt in my mind, after looking extensively at the budget, starting six months ago, and ending with a full review of the audit that was completed, the last audit that's available in November, there's a lot of tough decisions that need to be made. I will be the county administrator for a series of weeks, perhaps months, until I become totally comfortable with what is in your budget, what is in your scope, and then we'll move forward. The county administrator job will be a function of the weaknesses and the strengths that are there in the organization as the new commissioner goes in. Hiring someone out of the gate without understanding the operations is, I think, nearsighted, and I will ensure you that the first cut is in my office. The second, third, and fourth will come from the zero-based budgeting review that will take several months. I'm not going to stand here and tell you I have ideas until I wear the shoes of a complex organization I've learned in my career. I don't know. I'll find out, and I'll be held accountable in a very transparent way, publicly open, and you'll follow the decision process because you're shaping it as I'm doing this campaign, knocking in 6,000 doors. I know what you want, I know what you're hearing, what I'm hearing from you. That'll be my plan.
Thank you very much. That same question now to Tony Tidwell.
As I stated before, I've been with the county for 28 years. I'd say for the past four years, I've been in, well, for the past 28 years, I've been in basically every county department head meeting we've had. The last four years, though, that's always the main topic of discussion, what can we do to cut the budget without cutting services? We don't know what it's going to be when all the figures come in for this year. We do have a good staff up there that's going to be left, even though Commissioner Brown and our county administrators leave, we still have assistant county administrator, our chief financial officer, the staff that helps out there, and the county clerk. I would like to get with them, let's just go over and see what do we have, and where can we cut. Keep this in mind, if the money, if the revenues don't come in, and you start cutting budgets, then somewhere or another, you're going to have to cut some services. So we've got to determine what services are we willing to cut back on, suspend temporarily, but there's a lot of different decisions that need to be made. I don't think, you know, I was going to sit up here tonight and say what we'd actually cut out going in as county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, this is Steve Taylor.
I would go back to my last answer and say I would hire a county administrator as soon as possible, and pay him accordingly. I think you can pay, you've got the $62 million budget here, and hire the best man for the job. We would look at each department and see if there is anything that can be cut. Now, as Tony said, in the last four years, and all of us have been going through these budgets, like, trying to find something to pick on, and really, you can't, they've done a pretty good job cutting the budget. So I think that that in itself is a tribute to Commissioner Brown. I'm not up here making a commercial for him, but they've actually done some pretty deep cuts, and especially employee-wise. The county payroll is $2.3 million less today than it was four years ago. So that's a pretty steep budget cut. And when we keep cutting, the services is going to be sacrificed. Thank you.
And Tracy Lewis?
Yes, Jessica, I have looked at the budget, I am in the process of studying it, it is about 60 to 80 pages thick, but that is a part of my first 90-day solutions, to meet with each department head, and challenging them with a percentage, whether it be 2% or 5%, to cut their budget, and still provide the quality services that we expect. But I have had the chance in my team to look at the budget, and there are a couple of areas that I believe could be immediately affected and cut, and that would be the attorney fees. I met with Clarence Brown months ago, and asked him if he did not think that a county of our size, 100,000 population strong, could sustain an in-house attorney, maybe a young gun, someone out of college or only been in a firm for a while. And I think that's one way, either have an in-house attorney, or maybe not have so many attorneys, and have it narrowed down to a couple to do everything. The attorney fees budget for the last year was $193,900, so I know that we can help in that area. And then another way is I took a look at the sheriff's budget, and there's a telephone commissions where the inmates can call out. I think there's ways to save money there with what we're spending, and that would be something I would present to department heads, or leaders of a certain enterprise fund, to say, "Look, I think you can save us money here, and I think we might could turn around and make money." So there are two ways that I've found so far, but I'm still studying the budget and trying to get elected first.
Thank you very much. And finally, with the budget question, we go to Mike Abernathy.
That's a seven minutes ago, first thing you have to do when you go in the door, you're going to start looking at the line item budget. Yes, I took and had copies of that budget made back in October of last year, sat down in my house for a week, and went through that budget, talked to people about that budget last year, and began to look at that. And I tried to put myself in that position then, what would I cut, what would I not cut? I'm going to tell you right now, we've got 450 something vehicles flying all over this county. And one of the first things that I talked to people about was fuel savings, how can we save some of this? How can we, you know, I worked for Georgia Power for 39 years. I drove a vehicle to work, I got in a Georgia Power vehicle, when my day was over, I got back in my vehicle, went home. We've got too many vehicles flying all over Bartow County, need to be cut out, save that gas money right off the bat. I know people don't want to hear that, and that's probably going to be something that'll throw a boat in the wrong direction. We need to stop some of that waste on fuel consumption, 450 some vehicles. One thing you cannot do, we cannot have another tax increase. We're going to have to watch our budget. Services revenue is going to be the thing, but you're going to have to start, get that administrator in. I have looked also at bringing in an attorney, talked to him this week to be on staff with me, and I told him this day, I said, "You will be one of the first people I get up here." And I said, "What we're going to do then is we're going to look at this together and make sure I don't go to jail." Because you're going to have to make some radical changes and you're going to meet that attorney in-house, and that's not bad.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Let's get back to Ernestine Young Jones with question number four for our candidates.
Thanks, Allen. Freeport has been a huge topic of conversation during this race and going to 100% Freeport. Have any of you spoken with county school board officials about that potential quarter-million-dollar loss of revenue?
And I'm sorry, the first question goes to Tony Tidwell.
I have not spoken to them. I do know they just recently have proposed one, what, one and a half mils on their taxes. I don't think they can absorb that loss that Freeport would have right now. Now, sure, we may get into more industry if we do, it's, we might. Nobody really knows that for sure. Can the board absorb that amount right now? Can the county absorb it right now? It was originally planned that by now, we would be at 100% Freeport. Those of you who aren't familiar with the term, it's basically a tax on the inventory. So right now, county has, so we only tax like 20% of the inventory. But like I say, we wanted to already be at that point, but right now, it's hard for the county to absorb it.
Okay. Moving on to the Freeport question, to Steve Taylor.
No, I have not spoken to the school board about that, but as Tony says, that's going to hit them for about $540,000 and the county for about $250,000. So just saying, yeah, we're, we want to bring Freeport to 100%, that's easy to say that, but you're talking around schools and the county government together, close to $800,000. That's an easy, an easy answer. But my goal would be to make the county 100% Freeport and do it as quickly as possible. But it would be irresponsible to do that without speaking to the school board. And I think that is something that the county, we've all talked about it and all the candidates, I think, have agreed that it's something that we're going to act to bring to Barto County. The city's at 40% right now, and I think they're going to phase it into 100%. I'd like to see the county get to 100% before, before the, probably the city gets to 100%. Maybe some, work out some kind of agreement that we could be at 100% together. Thank you.
All right. Now to Tracy Lewis.
Ernestine, yes and no. I am in Rotary with Dr. Harper and in Paxton, we have said that, I've asked him that I want to get with him and talk with him about this Freeport issue. But what people have got to realize is this is crippling economic development and jobs, which we're all up here saying. And the results of getting rid of Freeport and industries looking at us, instead of eliminating us, we're seeing us on this map and we've just become an elimination and we don't even get the look and we don't even know that they were possibly looking here. It will come back tenfold. Maybe not in the first year, but within a few years, it will come back tenfold when we have those industries in here contributing to our tax base and providing jobs that we so need. So yes, my idea of the, how it would affect the half-million-dollar budget with the school systems is to find those public-private partnerships, those Anheuser's, those Toya's, Zep, Amphasep, all those, what they were already paying, if they will just sponsor a Daraswell High School, Cass High School, Cass Middle, Woodland, whatever school they pick, and put in the money if John Harper and his team cannot find a way to cut that 500,000. They could still be putting into that, but we could get off this map in the first 90 days if elected and get the industries in here with the tax base that they will bring and the jobs that our 9% unemployment rate so duly needs.
Thank you. And now to Mike Abernathy.
I'm very pro-education. I don't want to hurt school systems, but if my budget at home's bad, I'm going to cut my budget and I'm going to quit buying loaf bread with peanut butter on it if I have to. And I believe that one of the big things for school board is on the $22 million budget, you're going to take it back and you're going to have to cut it because people of Barto County are not going to want even a $60 increase on a $100,000 loan. And the tax structure's changing so fast, the economy's such, I'm for getting that Freeport tax in, get our business in here, but you're going to have to look and I think both the county school board, county, everybody's got to look at their budget and strip them on down till the people realize that we've cut all we can cut out of these budgets. And when we're bleeding, when we come out of any meeting with the school board, Dr. Harper, anybody else, I don't want to hurt education. We've got a lot of good kids here and we're talking about a lot of great things, but one thing we've got to do, they need to take that budget and cut it to the core before we start adding more taxes.
All right. Thank you. And finally, to Joe Hall.
But have you spoken with the county officials?
No, I have not talked to Dr. Harper on this issue. I was with him in a chamber meeting, but I didn't talk to him.
Thank you.
Okay. And then to Mike Bearden.
Formally to the board, I've not talked to them informally on the campaign trail, absolutely. It's time for taxes to go down, not up. It's time for the hard-working, struggling taxpayers of our county to have allegiance to them and not to organizational structures. Times are tough. These are serious decisions that must be made. Sickles be given all over that we've got to find ways to do better with less as the rest of the country has been being done. There have been discussions, there will continue to be discussions. In fact, this is a symptom of, part of our problem moving forward. My third point is comprehensive plan for balanced growth. The school system and the county commissioners' office must be embedded together daily, not monthly. Cass High School, the third school, has been built since I went to school, at the old old school, is going to cause additional transportation dollars because of a lack of planning. The Board of Education, the Commissioner's Office missed an opportunity there by doing something that results in lack of planning. We've got to ensure that all levels of government, the sheriff, the judicial system, the city of Cardisville, the development authorities, the Board of Education, understands what the major overarching issues are. And right now, it's not, times are good, times are tough. We need experience to make those tough decisions. There'll be more discussions, yes. Freeport is absolutely necessary.
Thank you. Our next question from our panelists comes from Mike Garcia.
Thank you. I haven't been in Barto County very long, but since I've been here, I've had information on this transportation splosh run down my throat. So I'm just anxious to know, are you in favor or opposed to it? And if it fails to pass, what would be your solution to traffic funding?
All right. Our first question goes to, first to Steve Taylor.
I'm going to answer that as if I was already commissioner. And as commissioner, you don't take a stand on a sales tax splosh at all. You don't, you don't work for it, you don't work against it. And that's the way I'll leave it. The public is going to decide it. If it's voted in, then you'll govern one way with all the money that's coming into the county, even though it's state dollars. The, it's going to originate from the 15-county area in Northwest Georgia. Barto County is going to get 25% of the money out of the 15-county area. So that's somewhere in the neighborhood of 350 million. It's going to happen over 10 years. There'll be a lot of road improvements. And then on the other hand, you've got, you've got another penny on retailers in this community. They're going to step back, go buy a new car instead of 7%, you're going to pay 8% and the bill's going to get pretty high. So as a commissioner, it's really not proper to take a stand on the T-splosh, in my opinion. You need to let the people decide, and whatever's decided, you'll govern from the decision of the people. Thank you.
All right. Now we go to Tracy Lewis.
Great question, Mike. And I am still undecided to answer your question, if I favor it or if I don't favor it. I'm doing research and I'm looking forward to some debates where the people are for it and against it. But regardless, any tax, it is a terrible timing for it. Who wants to pay a penny more when you go shop for your groceries or get your gas or whatever your needs are? It's terrible timing. But then again, I am in logistics. My business is fast-track delivery. I know the importance of the roads and Georgia is lacking in that all over the nation, and we need those improvements. So your next question, if it fails, how will we fund it? That would be something we'd have to look at locally. Maybe we could do a local splosh for just our county and fix just our roads. But my vote counts just as much as each one of y'all's. So I encourage you to research this just the same as we are. And as soon as I have a position on this, I don't mind being transparent and telling you that. And I think as a leader, that's what we should do. But I am still in the research stages and I encourage you to do it, and your vote counts just as much as each one of us up here on this panel.
Thank you. Now to Mike Abernathy.
No. I want to tell you, I researched this thing and I know what Steve's saying and I know what everybody's saying. I've researched it, I've looked at it for myself, and there are too many ties and there are too many loose things hanging out. I look at Alabama, Alabama, this splosh is not just, these sploshes not just for the state of Georgia, but there's one going on in every state in the union. And when you find that, you begin to look at the calendar and you see that this is tied back to the UN 21 agenda and it's going to be funded. The big problem with this thing is the fact that you've got a group out there of councilmen that are going to be put in place to handle a financing office. We're talking about $10 million just to fund it. We don't know who's going to be handling the money on this, and it looks to me like it's not going to be organized well enough, it's just not open enough. And I just do not, I cannot, at first, I thought it was the greatest thing to slice through because I like a penny to go get, for us, it was revenue in this northern county section for 1.487 million, 15 counties, whether the votes enter, votes out, it doesn't have anything to do with me. But 860,000 residents and you've got too many people negatively against it. I encourage each one of you to go out there and look on websites, look up your splosh tax, look up your T-splosh, see what you've got. Then look up this UN Agenda 21 and see how it's tied together. And Alabama has already said they will not allow this to come in. You've got two other states that are not allowing this into their nation at all, into their state at all.
Okay, thank you. My time. The T-splosh question now for Mike Bearden.
Finished my research several weeks ago and then announced on the campaign trail that I'm against T-splosh and O, and I did it publicly at the debate last week. Two overarching reasons. We don't need another layer of government. We've been proven by the Obama administration that stimulus works do not add to the equation. They do not create jobs, they sap jobs. Higher taxes cost jobs. Jobs look for lower tax environments, look for lower regulatory environments. T-splosh will do the opposite direction. The non-local control, the tax increase, and the fact that when you look at the details, you'll find that we're subsidizing Floyd County. It's time for us to step to the future. We no longer need to be a stepchild of Floyd County. We're under the T-splosh principles, building Highway 140 so that the trucks to the Lowe's Distribution Center that's in Floyd County can get through Barto County. You're proposed to be taxed to build Barto County's section of 140 for that purpose. You're being taxed under T-splosh to ensure that Rome can continue building their west bypass south of town to the Alabama line in the middle of the national forest. There is no reason we should be continuing to be backseat. I'm the only civil engineer up here that's been in the industry and knows this business. I'll set up a project management office in the Hunter Commissioners' Office and we'll say 20 or 30% and we'll do it and I'll ensure that we have a splosh program directly targeted toward transportation, not now.
Thank you. And our final question for this, for the candidate for this question, Tony Tidwell.
As a county employee, I'm not allowed either to campaign for or against it. This is a complicated task. I'm going to be, I'll give really, a lot of people in here probably aren't even familiar with what is actually taking place here, but as Bill mentioned, it'd be another penny on the dollar. The reason for it, they say Georgia spends less on their transportation roads than any other state. I think we're like 47th out of our, of our states. I agree, it sounds like, may not be some management like we need to see done on that. You've also got to look also now, as an individual, what it's going to do to us as far as being penalized by the state. Some of the projects they have listed, the Cass White Road, I've said, five hundred change reconstruction, Daphne Fair Road, Moda Alabama to West Avenue, Richards Road, CSX Railroad Crossing Safety, State Route 140, Uthcalugas Creek, the safety route, US 41, St. Anne Creek Road, US 41 intersection, US 41 connect, there's several projects that are in that package. It, you know, if it's not passed, we may not see any of that take place, but there again, I think in two years, if it's not passed, there's something that could be reevaluated and see if it can be handled differently if people are not in favor, if they rock this little round. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We go back to Jessica Lohman with question number six.
While we're discussing Winston Splosh taxes, taking a look at the 2014 splosh, are there projects that you would place first on your list for completion? And would you be in favor of bonding for some of those projects in order to complete them sooner?
This question first goes to Tracy Lewis.
Of the two, can you repeat, of the 2014 splosh?
Which projects would you place first on your list and which would consider bonding to complete them sooner?
I'm pretty sure that the landfill, the expansion of the landfill is on that list, and that is something that we so need in our county. The landfill currently sustains itself on the budget two-thirds, and so the general budget would put in one-third, which is close to a million. So that would probably be one of the top ones on that, on that list. But they used to sustain themselves even more, of course, with all the changes in the economy and everything, that's why they've dropped. But as far as bonding, yes, in favor of bonding and getting money whenever we can to help in any, any one of these areas. So yes.
Okay. Question out of Mike Abernathy.
Water and sewage, it's allocated $30 million. That'd be first. We've got water lines and sewage that needs to be fixed in the southern half of the county. We've got some old water lines that need work and they need addressing quickly. That'd be the first thing.
Okay. That same question now to Mike Bearden.
You're speaking splosh, not T-splosh. The existing splosh is already funded and prioritized. The coming, I'm not familiar with what details that you've seen. I don't know what's there, but in terms of any expenditure once I'm commissioner, we need to stop the clock first and do the planning. We need to have a publicly transparent water plan. We need to have a publicly transparent developed sewer plan. We need to have a publicly transparent transportation plan. We need then to roll those all up and then we need to pause and at county as a whole, not just a handful of folks who are in the land development business deciding what the future of our county will hold, but the county as a whole, in a very publicly engaged, transparent process, decide what this county will look like in 40 years when our children are here and we're gone. If we don't, I'm telling you folks, I've been elsewhere, I've seen other counties like Lunette County and Clayton County that have been ruined because they did not take the time to plan and they allowed the land development interest to control the commissioner's job. We cannot do that. We must stop. And while this pause button has been pushed regretfully, while we're bringing jobs, growth will come. We must build the infrastructure, but we've got a lot of planning to do. Just shooting from the hill, and I'm not saying we have in the past, the future is much different than the past has been. We're now a very large, complex county with a lot of complex issues and it's time to do a lot of detailed planning.
Thank you. Now to Tony Tidwell.
My understanding, there are already some items on this list that are, that take priority over some of the other projects. One of those would be in the landfill expansion. I think the landfill now, if I understood Rev. Connor, the, sold that landfill now, he said that it's, it's good for about another six years. That will go by quickly. Takes a while to develop more landfill space with all the liners and everything else, EPD approvals, things you have to go through. So my understanding, the landfill expansion, we've got a radio system that's going to be used by all the, the city of Carson, Emerson County Sheriff's Department. It's a new system in that basically mandated we've got to be on and we need it. Those who tried working when we had the damage from the tornadoes last year, we had a communication problem. And this will be crossing, crossing county boundaries where other law enforcement bases all be able to same type of system so we can communicate with each other. And then I think the other one might be that JBA debt on the 75, Holland 75 up at Cass White. Get that paid off so that we'll have a bargaining to, we have a company come in here, if it's a good company, we can give them the proper half price if we have to, give it to them if it's worth it, if they're bringing in enough jobs, they use enough material, something to get our tax base back up. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we go to Steve Taylor.
The, the future splosh, 2014's already been decided, it was voted on, so it's not really up to the commissioners. Tony said- Tommy said the landfill expansion is $12.5 million. That's going to be done with the radio system, that's 15 million, and retiring the JDA debt is 6.5 million. But as Mike Abernathy just said, water and sewer would come at the top of the list. Blade Road from I-75 to the lake, that needs to be done desperately bad. And that could revitalize that entire area down there if they had sewage down there. You can imagine a retirement communities and, and other businesses coming in down there. That's all they need, in my opinion. We're sitting on so much potential down there and all we lack is sewage. And with this new SPOLOX, it could happen and we need to make it happen quick.
Thank you. We go back to Ernestine Young Jones from WBHF.
Thanks, Sam. I trace that you in particular took some heat last week for suggested privatization of EMS. I checked with the county and learned that not only EMS operates the laws, but so does the landfill. And so I like to ask all the candidates, would you consider privatization of those departments and other departments that may not be as profitable?
All right, even though you mentioned Tracy, we'll go first to Mike Abernathy with that question.
I think if the economy gets bad enough, if not one of us on this table, it's not, that we all understand, we may have to look at privatization. But is it a priority? The answer for the EMS is no, I don't believe it. I believe you could really look good and you can cut $2 million out now, but four, five years down the road, when they, they're not making a profit at Redland Park or we can't even afford to put somebody in an ambulance, haul them to hospital because the cost's gotten so high. Takes nine months to get an ambulance built and put it on ground. If I do away with all the EMTs we got in the county, we're getting 12,000 calls a year or something like that, maybe, boy, we could be in a mess if we do away with something so vital to us. That is a nonprofit thing, we don't even look at it that way. But can we make it better? Can we make it beneficial? We've got to. Or privatizations out there and all of us know, if the economy got bad enough, you'd have to look at it. But that's one of those issues, it's a social issue for the people of Bartow County, for the welfare. And I would not want to lose our EMS group to Redland or anybody else. And then three years down the road, they say, we're walking out of here, we're not going to do this, we're not making a profit off of it. We'd be like Cherokee County and we'd have our firemen running EMS routes trying to get people to the ambulance. We just cannot do it.
Thank you. Now to Mike Bearden.
I'm deeply concerned for the county employees. We've got a lot of good folks that are working as hard as they can. We need to find ways to limit government scope and make tough decisions on what services aren't needed during tough times so that we can eliminate the furlough systems that have been penalizing all employees, good or bad. There's no doubt in my mind that there are opportunities to do that with hard decisions. Leadership matters. Experience matters to define leadership. Privatization is what I've been saying for months, is on the table. Everything is on the table. The full-based, zero-based budgeting review that will take months, not weeks, is obligated to be done. If you look at the state law that sets up the Commissioner's Office, has an office that the state requires each one of us to look at every dot and ensure that it's efficient and effective for the citizens of this county. My allegiances to the county, citizens, hardworking taxpayers who struggle. But folks, we've got to find ways to trim, to ensure that we put them back on a fast foot for full-blown, morale-boosting, aggressive service. Because government service is nothing but the employees. And there's no way that any one of us can do it without that good cadre of folks. Privatization must be looked at, whether it's a priority or not, depends on the devils and the details. I'm not going to sit here and tell you what I'm going to do with any budget item until I get inside those shoes and learn what's there.
Thank you. Now to Tony Tidwell.
I mentioned earlier that county government is different than private enterprise. And this is one of the areas that's different. Our budget is a service-oriented type budget. If it wasn't, we wouldn't be having to deal with taxes. I think that's where the, you know, whoever gets in as Commissioner will have to do a lot of research, find out which of those areas the people would be willing to give up some of that service. I don't think the EMS is one of those areas. They are, they are very, we have a good group. They care about you. If you ever have to use them, you'll understand. There might be some other areas, and I think somebody might have taken me wrong last time when I said maybe have to increase user fees. And somebody said, well, that's just like another tax. I don't know that everybody, all the taxpayers need to be paying for a particular service that they're the only ones, just a few of those use that service rather than cut it out. Maybe, maybe we have to go up on those fees a little bit to help fund that, especially right now. Maybe later on, we can suspend that. But everybody should, just like somebody coming to get a building permit, what I deal with, they should be paying what it costs them for those services. And you as the individuals shouldn't be having to pay for that person who comes in, pulls that building permit. Although you also, we do a lot of dealing with complaints and things like that that we don't receive permits from. Those just areas need to look at and be up, put into public input on that. Thank you.
Okay. Now to Steve Taylor.
You know, I talked to some of the guys over at the EMS and I think the problem over there is collections. I think if a private company, if a private company was owed the amount of money that the EMS is owed right now, they would do something to collect it or maybe they'd make a better effort. I think we need to try to make the EMS maybe set a long-term goal of, let's make this thing break even at least, because you do have a revenue stream coming in. But breaking it even would, I think last year they lost a million-two, this year maybe they're going to lose a million-one, or I may have those numbers backward, but it's still a million dollars a year. And I think there's ways that we could look at that without having to privatize it. I experienced last week, a guy fell and the ambulance was called and they cleaned him up and he went home. And those guys did a great job with him, but he did not go to the hospital. I wonder sometimes if a private service had been there, would they have scooped him up and taken him to the hospital and you'd had an ambulance bill and emergency room bill? Sometimes I wonder, so our EMS is given a service that's probably, they're not getting a lot of credit for. And as far as the landfill privatization, I'd say we need to keep local control of that. That would be something that I would really, really not want to go down the road. It is almost impossible to get a landfill permitted now. So I'd really want to try to keep the landfill county open.
Okay. And finally, let's get to Tracy Lewis on this question.
Yes, privatization. I did come out last week and I did not mean to imply that EMS was on my radar for privatization. I was simply giving an example. And the example was when a service becomes a burden to the, to the government, to the budget, and you have to look at exiting that business. That's the example I gave was with the Sam Howell Hospital when I was a child that was in business here. Frank Moore was the Commissioner and he was losing so much money that he had to privatize it. He sold it and now it's a booming business, the Carlsberg Medical Center, and we don't have to worry about that anymore. But as far as privatizing EMS or the landfill, no, not yet. It is not time for that. We need our own people servicing our people. When we had to use the ambulance service a couple of years ago when my mom had a surgery and I was so happy to see the employees that showed up, the people that I knew, and they were taking care of my mom just as I would. So that would be a last option. But until you get into office and you open the desk drawers and find out all the details, it's hard to make those decisions. But no, that would be a last decision is to privatize EMS. And we've got to take care of our employees and look after our employees and also make sure that they're making enough so that we don't lose them to Cherokee or Cobb County. And they are the true public servants of our society, firemen, EMS, and the police department and deputies.
All right, thank you very much. Want to remind everybody, you are listening to AM 1450 WBHF. This is our political forum, our forum number one, where we're having a focus on our five qualified candidates for county commissioner. Up next from our panelist of questions, we have Mike Garcia.
Thank you. The city of Emerson currently gets less than 2% of the local sales tax money. Assuming that this Lake Point project becomes a reality, Emerson will not be able to cover the cost of the development and of the services that will be required for that project. So would you be willing to help or to have the county help defray the cost?
That question will be first answered by Mike Bearden.
Aren't we fortunate to have Lake Point in our community? I've been involved with that behind the scenes seven, starting about seven years ago, involved planning the infrastructure that results in making them possible. That's a start for our future. Emerson absolutely is strapped. There's a precedent for what Mike's talking about. In the past, the county and the cities have gotten together and agreed to underwrite Kingston, which had a deficit during a period of time. And under the state sales tax formula, was not allowed to get what they had gotten the year before. The cities and the county got together and agreed in a gentleman's agreement, in a model that I give Clarence Brown credit for. If one thing about Clarence's legacy rises to the top, it's putting together all of our governments in a harmonious relationship that puts a common front outside. Lake Point is our future. It is our front door. We no longer will have, Blade Road is our front door. The opportunities that we're going to have as a function of that makes the story that I, if I'm honored by being your Commissioner, will tell in the Midwest. It'll be a half a page story. Look what's happening already in Bartow County. If you're not coming on board, you're missing something. They'll have to look at us once they hear Lake Point. We need to do everything we can to make sure it's a success. I'm delighted it's here. It will be a success. To what degree the county needs to come in support financially is to be determined. But we've got to make sure that that happens without strapping the taxpayers. Yes, there needs to be cooperation.
Okay, thank you very much. Now to Tony Tidwell.
I know Commissioner Brown has been in negotiations with the city of Emerson and the people of Lake Point. I'm not familiar with, I'm not, just not privy to that information as to what type of agreements have been made. We do have to look at, just like we were talking about some of these other companies coming in though, how much are we willing to help a company out as far as tax breaks or anything? You've got to look at, how many employees are they bringing in? And I think with this Lake Point, I think they'll build out, they're looking about 4,000 employees. They say indirectly, indirectly, it's going to be around 27,000 employees for Bartow County. We've got to look at all those people coming in, it's going to be playing ball maybe at nine o'clock in the morning. They've got to have something to do that afternoon. What are they going to do? Maybe they'll come in, visit Tellus, Booth Museum, Edaway and Inmounds, shop downtown Carlsberg. That's extra tax dollars we'll be seeing off of that. So, you know, there's a lot we're going to have to look at, see how much would the county be able to afford to help out, depending on how much we're going to get back. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now to Steve Taylor.
You know, the future revenue growth in the county won't be at the lower end tax for a long, long time. It's going to be sales tax. And the most potential we have for sales tax growth is going to be Emerson with the new retails and there's rumor to be a giant retailer that could come on any time down there. The revenue growth for the county would be tremendous from, from, just from Emerson alone. So of course the county would have to help absorb some of the costs and they already are absorbing some of the costs as far as some of the road improvements and things down there. So of course we would help Emerson.
Okay. Now to Tracy Lewis.
Yes, absolutely. The county needs to help Emerson and we need to land Lake Point. Lake Point will not only be a home run, it will be a grand slam out of the park. Bartow County needs Lake Point for, number one, jobs. In the first year that they're completed, it's going to provide over 9,000 jobs. And when it's totally completed, it'll be close to 30,000 jobs. But the main thing is Bartow County, if, when we get Lake Point, I'm going to think positive here, we're going to be like the recreational, recreational world of the state of Georgia, just like Disney World is known in Florida. We're going to be known for Lake Point, for all the sports that they, that they will be providing. And so yes, the county has got to help with that. And then on one of my Road Mountain to Success, my issues is to aggressively promote tourism. And because of those tax dollars, those tax dollars that people come in to visit our community and not living here but staying for the weekend and playing ball or visiting our museums, all the cultural and a history that we have to promote here, that is the kind of people that we need here, the tourists. And maybe we can even get some of those tourists that come into Lake Point to come on out to White Georgia, to my dad's place in Old Car City and see the largest junkyard in the world. And then he just had photographers a couple of months ago, Charles Stanley groups, 80 photographers staying three days and three nights, and they were eating three meals a day and in the hotel, helping contribute to our tax base. That is the number one way to raise our tax base, through sales tax.
Thank you. Now to Mike Abernathy.
Local option seller tax is going to be key with 13% hotel tax, 3 million, 4 million visitors coming in here, that's a lot of money, just 13% right there. County tax, 3%, state tax, 4% right now. Like the other two said, that tax base is going to be a wad. You know, $1 million for one mile roads, if we put it in 3 million, if we have sewer water with it, that's the cost of putting it in. But we'll recap that pretty quick. I don't see how we can help. I know that the cities are already working together and Clarence Brown's working with them. I was at the city council of Kingston yesterday. They're having some struggling times too because their population has dropped and it dropped their percentages like it was 1.1% where Emerson's is 2% of that tax, local option seller tax. And it was going to really hit Kingston at a time when their budget is so limited and what they decided doing and went down even this past week. And they met together and all the cities agreed to leave Kingston at the upper tier that it was before and so as far as their population. So help them, I think everybody's going to work together. I just think that's a natural thing because if Lake Point comes in, it's going to bless everybody.
Thank you very much. We go back to our panelists to get question number nine from Jessica Lodi in the Daily Tribune News.
During last week's debate, the subject of supporting local law enforcement came up and certainly all of you supported that. In particular, Mike Abernathy, you spoke to knowing where the drugs are and is, what would you do to help strengthen our local law enforcement, particularly those dealing with drugs and their personnel?
All right, since I was initially directed to Mike Abernathy, we'll go to you and then we'll get back to the cycle if anybody else would like to add to that. But Mike, since I was directed to you.
I'm on the street more than probably anybody on this panel because we feed the hungry. We've got certain spots in Bartow County that are hotspots. Guy driving by a $40,000 car with $10,000 tires on it, hadn't worked in 15 years and you've got a pretty good obvious idea, just fall in back home and rest him because he's selling dope, I guarantee. And here's the next deal, we've got hotspots all over this county. We've got hotels that have nothing but indigent folks in them that are making them, a lot of them can't see when you open the door at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon. I'm feeding most of those. We have a feeding program, we're taking food to these children, we're knocking on doors. The people of Bartow County, Clark will work with us, whoever's the sheriff will work with the people, make those phone calls. Everybody has contact. You know, if we've pulled this whole group right now, Clark came over and did a methamphetamine class in our church on a Sunday morning at 10:30. My victims were scared to death. They said, man, you will ruin everybody in here off. You can't take the people without a methamphetamine class on Sunday morning. It lasted for three hours. The people were so interested in it. We had capacity crowd, they were lined around the walls. Families, even in my church, probably 80% of the people or 90% are affected by drugs in Bartow County. And all those people know where the drugs are at. They know where they're coming from and they hate drugs. I hate drugs. And I didn't say that because I'm a drug addict. I said that because I'm in the county constantly, I'm among the people.
Okay, thank you. I know. Because it was directed to you, did anybody else, or Jessica, did you follow up?
I just wanted to know how you would help their personnel and help strengthen their efforts to cut down all the drugs in Bartow County.
You know what? We do this two ways. Number one is we do it ourselves. We're not going to have anything to do with alcohol, we're not going to have anything to do with the things that cause things to come in. We're not going to have anything to do with methamphetamine. If you find one of your kids, I pastor church, I tell them every day, if I catch you on drugs or I know you're doing drugs, I'm calling, I'm calling attorney. If I know you've got children and you're using drugs, I'm calling defacts. I think the people of Bartow County, they need to get up off their hind end, take a role in their government, in their county and put a stop to it, put it out of here. We need to help those policemen. We don't need to turn our backs and say they're not doing their job. I think we need to fail Clark and the police department in a big way because we need to be on that phone. phone. If you see somebody making a deal, and you know it's a deal, you need to make a phone call. I had a guy pull up in my driveway a few years back. When I looked in the backseat, I snuck around the 13 acres, went down behind his truck, craziest thing in the world to do, but I did, and I went down there rolling the stuff. They had a big bag of drugs, and they had $100 bills and I rolled that bigger in. And I went back to the truck, I said, "I got your tag number, I'll see you in jail." And then I walked around like I had two guns, and I didn't have nothing. Scared the kid, but it was really what I done. But the deal was, I called them as soon as I got there, and they were on the spot pretty quick, and they, they ran that down and found the lab, but it was already gone when I got there, because they knew I was serious.
Okay. Now, since that question was directed to Mike Abernathy, did anybody else on the panel want to address that issue? And we would, if we wanted to, in order, we would go to Tony Tidwell. So does anybody want to address that question from Jessica? Okay. Let's get back around, and we will let everybody know that our plan here is to go to the bottom of the hour. We'll take a quick five, so our panelists have about another 15 minutes, and then when we come back, the candidates will have their section to be able to ask each other questions. So as we move our way through, maybe one more round, we go back to Ernestine Young Jones with WBHF News.
Thanks, Alan. Is it the role of the commissioner to promote diversity? Bartow has a diverse population, but few minority department heads. Not only does the county employ hundreds of people, but the commissioner also makes numerous appointments to key boards and committees. Would it be a goal of yours to ensure that the county government reflects the population?
We would make this question first to Tony Tidwell.
I don't have a problem with that. The county employees have, for several years, have had to go through a diversity training program. Now, it's kind of crazy. When they first start talking about diversity training, I'm thinking they're talking about, okay, you know, learning different jobs so we can cross, cross-train if I need somebody for this department. That's not what they're talking about. As mentioned, we're talking about dealing with different races, different ethnic backgrounds. And I don't think the commissioner's ever been the type that's just kind of picking out somebody to be a department head just because of their race or because of who they know. I think when you pick out that department head, it needs to be based on the quality of that individual. I don't care who they are, what their beliefs are, as long as they're the best candidate for that position as department head. That's the way I was brought up, and that's the way I would do it if I was the county commissioner.
All right. Thank you. Now we move to that same question to Steve Taylor.
Yes, it would be a goal to be more sensitive, I guess, to other races. And in my own business, we've, we've employed people of all races. And, and I think I, you can ask around the community, and I've treated people the same and fairly, and I would do that as commissioner, too. But I think that is something that we would all be, I'll just speak for myself, maybe not all, but I think that's something that would be totally appropriate to be sensitive to everyone. Yes, that would be my goal, yes.
All right. We move to Tracy. All right. Now to Tracy Lewis.
Yes, that would be a goal of mine at minimum for it to reflect our population. Diversity is not only race, but it's also sex. And I think that anybody who has a job, especially the department head or even just as an employee, it needs to be based on their performance and on their qualities and what their, their skills are to do. That's what it needs to be based on. It has nothing to do with race or gender. We need to make sure that we are diversified in that area for many reasons. First of all, for our, for just presence, for our presence and representing our community. But also, the quality of people that I have met on this campaign trail, I've had so many, and they, and some of them are without jobs, and they need a job, and they are qualified to serve in, in the community, and it would help with the diversity issue. So yes, as commissioner, that would be a goal of mine, and I would want every department head to go through some testing and make sure that they are still qualified, or if they need to take more classes to do that. And if not, then there needs to be a hiring process. And diversity is very high on my priority list.
Okay. Now to Mike Abernathy.
Ernestine, every business in America is underneath adversity requirement, every business. And the county is as well. I'm sure of that. Because any big business, work with George Power, we had those parameters that we had to meet. Would I be for it? That's the question. Yes, I would. I think quality is the number one key, but I think surrounding yourself with people and having those quality education to get the job done, that's what counts. This past week, I had one of the greatest revivals at my church. I had a Jew in there on Sunday morning. I had a white guy, old white guy, in there on Sunday night. And then I had black choirs and black ministers all week long, and we had revival, I believe it was the most diverse revival I've ever been in in my life. Heathens, men, women, that was a pretty good diverse group. And I sat yesterday with the fireman, and we sat across the firetruck, and I said, "Guys, I want to tell you something." I said, "There's no blacks in this fire department that I see here." He said, "We need diversity, don't we, Mike?" I said, "Yes, we do." And I said, "That has got to come to Bartow County." And three firemen at Kingston City Fire Department, and I sat there and talked about that same issue last night, because we need that, because each one of us have qualities and characteristics that we bring to the table, and we need each other in this county.
Okay. And finally, the same question to Mike Bearden.
Thanks, Ernestine, for the question. Absolutely. The short answer is yes. The longer answer is, we're now a very modern county. It's not the same county that I was raised in, a poor southern Appalachian, Hillbilly County, in northwest Georgia, 40, 50 years ago. We are a very diverse population. When I went to Cass, my only black friend, the only black man I knew, was Ray Beavers. Ray and I separated when he went to Sumner Hill, and I went to Cass, but I hired the first black financial analyst for George Power, 25 years ago. I created a group called Fayette Black Leadership in Fayette County 25 years ago, where I put together six of my friends that I'd come into contact with, where I was coaching Little League basketball, soccer, and baseball, and mentored them and plugged them in the political hierarchy there in the county that's never been as, the size of Bartow County is today. I have on my core campaign committee, seven people that we put in place to be a hedge around me to ensure that I'm true to my values. One of those seven people was a local black man. I've identified two folks that I'm assessing as I go through the campaign, that I say, "These would be good leaders for the future of Bartow County." Judge me by my life, judge me by my actions. Long answer, short answer? Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our next question comes from Mike Garcia.
Thank you. What's the worst criticism you've heard of Bartow County, and what would you do to fix that criticism?
Well, I'll ask that question first to Steve Taylor.
The, probably the worst criticism I've heard of Bartow County is our education system. And I think that's reflected probably across the rural south. We, as a commissioner, I'm not running for school board or, or anything to do with the education, but I do think that the college and career academy is something that the commissioner could support. I'm not saying we're going to throw money at it, but that's one of the, one of the things that we could do for it. And it's a, it's a, it's a great thing, and if you, if you don't know about it, you need to get some information. There's some people here, I think, that's, that's got information on that. But as far as criticism in the county, that would be number one, especially being on the development authority, that's something that companies looking here is very sensitive to, is our education system, our graduation rates, and, and training. That's, that's the main thing that I hear when I'm asked that question.
Okay. Now to Tracy Lewis.
I have two criticisms. I went through Leadership of Georgia back in 2000, and I was with leaders throughout the state. And the one thing that they know Bartow County for is drugs and our drug problem. And we didn't get a chance to answer, Pastor, but I do. I don't know, but I'm going to answer now. Public safety with the sheriff, they need the means to get the drugs off the streets. That is the one thing that I do not want to be known for. When I'm going outside of this county and representing Bartow County, each one of us, when we go outside of Bartow County, are representatives of Bartow County. And they hear that, it just, it really upset me. So supporting the sheriff's department and giving them the means to, to get that off the street and to train people and to, and give them alternatives and things to do, especially children. The Boys and Girls Club is awesome place for them to go, especially all through the year, but in the summer. They need alternatives so they don't get into drugs, our children do. And the other thing is education, our workforce, and training our workforce. What I hear, a friend of mine was trying to hire an administrative assistant a couple of months ago. He had 21 people apply. One of the, and this would be considered a high-paying job, one of them showed up like they were going to a Saturday picnic. We need to know how to dress for success. This workforce academy, the college and career academy, is a great way to start. So the skills that they need for a certain job, they can be capable of providing to the company where they want to get a job.
Thank you very much. Now to Mike Abernathy.
You know, that's a hard question, because, but it's a good question. It's just a lot of things. But one comment that I've heard that's a little different from everybody else, and I thought I'd throw in here, was PVC jungles. What are we going to do about them across Bartow County? We were in a boom, we created subdivisions, now they're sitting there with PVC sticking out of the ground and no house on it. And we don't want another whole society, a whole half of this thing. One of the great fears of the people of Lake Point is, and this happened in Pauling County, and I already told you, it costs $3 million just to build a road for one mile. And we, we hook ourselves to too much of this growth. We're going to have to have controlled growth. As Lake Point comes in, you're going to have super abundant number of people coming into Bartow County. And I want the contractors to be building, I want people to be moving, I want the, the money back. But the one thing you're going to have to do is control growth to, to some degree, or we're going to wind up like Pauling County, we're going to be flat broke because we jumped in there and tried to build for every subdivision that want to be in here, and we tried to do all this building, and we wind up with another PVC jungle. If we have a little bit of a turn down, or Lake Point doesn't turn down to be what we wanted it to be. I hope that makes sense.
Okay. Now on to Mike Bearden.
You know, when the question was, "What's the biggest complaint about Bartow County", my mind turned immediately to what my wife and I have been doing for four months. We've been knocking on doors. My strategy is not signs, t-shirts, black shirts, and advertising, it's door knocking. We've knocked on 6,000 doors across this county, in every precinct in the county. And I've come close, personal, personal with so many folks that I would not have otherwise helped, the opportunity to reconnect with my childhood and my family. But the common story that I'm hearing from these voters, who my allegiance is, is that it's cynicism, it's lack of trust in government. They're ready to move forward. They're ready for change to occur in Bartow County in a positive way. They're ready for a transparent government. They're ready to understand more about what's happening with their life. This job that we're all vying to be in is the part of government that touches people's lives on a daily basis, and they don't know it. And there's ignorance out there about what's going on. We've had very honest stewardship for 20 years, yet folks don't believe it. They're out there thinking that people are doing things that aren't being done. It's time for us to use every modern platform we can, in light of our sole commissioner form of government, where we have this unique challenge, where one person makes all legislative and executive decisions. We need to use YouTube, we need to use the internet, we need to use Facebook, we need to use any means available to talk about the complex issues that the commissioner must make. So it's cynicism and trust.
Thank you very much. And finally, to Tony Tidwell.
I just almost failed. I hate to even hear anybody talking negative about the county, but when you get to talk about really some of our shortcomings, I think the lack of having activities for our young population, our teenagers, unless they go to the movies, there's not a lot to do around here, especially we don't have, you know, the bowling lanes anymore, we don't have skating rink. We're hoping with this, that's another plus for having, if we can get that Lake Point in, there's some things they will be offering that we'll help out there. I think our lack of sewer is a negative on us. Anytime you're putting that much sewage in the ground and around the lake area, it can come back and haunt us a little bit.